Okay, this meeting is called to order at 6:33. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I please have a motion in a second that the board approves the following consent agenda? The BOE HR Agenda 815, 2023 with salaries. The PCSD Board HR Addendum, the Dairy Transmittal, the RFB 204723, and Therapy Dog Form.
Dr. Roberts, we just have to...
Did I read the wrong ones?
Yeah, we just have to go up to 3A, the approval of the agenda.
Oh, that's not what I just said.
I think you're on the consent agenda.
Oh, consent, okay. My computer is...
Do you want mine?
No, it's... Why is it doing this? Okay, can I please have a motion in a second that the board approves the following? Yeah, it's saying the same thing, consent agenda. Okay, so it's not just me.
No, it's a 3A.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's still on, it's still here, so click on the A, see if that works. There you go.
Can I please have a motion in a second that the board approves the August 15, 2023 Agenda as submitted? I apologize. So moved.
Second.
Board members, any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor? All in favor and none opposed? Now I will go to the consent agenda.
This sounds familiar.
Yeah, deja vu. Okay, can I please have a motion in second that the board approves the following consent agenda? The HR Agenda, August 15, 2023. The HR Addendum, August 15, 2023. The Dairy Transmittal, the RFB 204723, and Therapy Dog Form signed.
So moved, second.
That was Aleah and Catherine?
Yep.
All right, board members, questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor and none opposed? Can I please have a motion in a second that the Treasurers Report, including the Cash Report, General Fund Cash Report, the General Fund Revenue Status Report, the General Fund Budget Status Report, the School Lunch Fund Cash Report, and the School Lunch Fund Revenue and Expense Budget Report for the month ending June 30, 2023 be approved?
So moved.
Second. Board members, questions or comments? All right, all in favor? All in favor and none opposed? Special reports?
Sure, we have a couple of special reports this evening. First, we have Mrs. Angela Dunson, our Director of Food Service, who's going to present our annual food service program review. And then followed by the team from Campus Construction, who's going to give us a capital project update. Ms. Dunson, come on up. You have a clicker and the slides are all set up for you.
Okay. Hi, everybody, I'm Angela Dunson, the Food Service Director. So a little highlight of our 2022-23 school year successes. So our students were categorized free, reduced, and paid this year, which is a difference from last year. So our average daily participation decreased from last school year. So this school year, we serve 343,730 lunches across the district, which is a difference of about 44,517 over 21-22 school year, when everybody could eat for free. We served 108,518 breakfasts, which is a difference of 24,199 breakfasts over the previous school year, when everybody was free. So in 22-23, the reimbursement rates were increased. However, they are a little bit decreased for the 23-24 school year. Staffing last school year, since mid-year, we were fully staffed. Mosaic in my school books, this was a transition, it went really smoothly. Staff adjusted well to the new point-of-sale system, and families seemed to be able to navigate the My School Bucks with minimal challenges. We attended each of the schools kindergarten orientations to welcome new families and give them an overview of food service so they have what they need for incoming. We did introduce some new food items. So we had these CoolTropic slushies, there were four different flavors, Grape Blue Raspberry and Paradise Punch, which each of those counted as half a cup of fruit. And then we also had a Tropical Trio Juice/Slushy, which counts as a half cup of vegetable. So they went over well, especially at elementary level. But I think at the high school, they went well too. We had Azizi Brands Trail Mix, Roasted Chickpeas, and Sour Raisins. Those were kind of introduced towards the end of the school year, so we are doing some of those at the beginning of this school year as well. We tried some new recipes, which included Tater Top Breakfast Bowl, Muffin Parfait, French Toast Squares, a Creamsicle Smoothie, Cobble's, also tried a Blueberry Overnight Oats. These recipes were all highlighted during National Nutrition Month and National Breakfast Week. So if you have kids here and they never talked about it, maybe you should ask them about it. We also celebrated School Lunch Hero Day with the team to acknowledge all their hard work. You can also check out the team pictures on our website. So we did update the food service website a little bit, kind of made it a little more user-friendly. We provided food to the Rochester Christian School from January to June, and they anticipate utilizing our services in the coming year as well. Some of our challenges last school year, supply chain, same thing, still nationwide. However, we didn't see as much challenges with the items that we needed to get, so we were able to work around that this year. Equipment, there were several repairs done to include Cobble's Indian Landing Walk-In Cooler, Bay Trail Walk-In Freezer. We had some repairs on our Combi ovens and steamers, and we're also looking to replace steamers in the coming year at Indian Landing and Cobble's. UPK delivery, so I'll say we made that work. In the coming year, we will have a specific vehicle to utilize for deliveries. One location is in Pittsburgh, so we're still working on logistics for delivery there. But all looks good. I think one of the bigger challenges was the negative student balances. So we ended with approximately 30,000 negative balances. I think it was to be expected, as students didn't understand necessarily, that we went back to not being free. So a lot of families called frustrated that their students were getting meals if they didn't have money on their account. However, we have the New York State anti-shaming laws, so they were able to get a meal regardless of having funds. Email letters, or you know, letters were sent out by email, one to two times a month with negative balances. Some parents did report they never received these, however, in the reports that I have, they did. So that was a challenge, but we'll see what this new year brings. So for 23-24 updates, we do have some staff not returning, so we have about four positions to fill. We have hired a couple people that will start at the beginning of the year, hoping for more, so spread the word. At Cobble's, we're going to be utilizing the new line in the cafeteria that was installed in 2021, so that has not been utilized, so we're going to maximize that this year. We created a workspace for the cook manager at Scribner so that she will have space to have some privacy and meet with staff and work through some challenges that we had. Free, reduced, paid applications, so again, meals will not be free for all, so Penfield does not meet the percentage of free, reduced to qualify for CEP. Families must fill out an application if they feel they qualify. They can be found online in the parent portal or filled out and mailed and handed in. Harvest of the Month is returning, so we're going to do it the third Thursday of each month. September, we're going to highlight tomatoes with a pasta salad. We'll also have a tryout ballot for students, primarily elementary, middle school. I don't know how many high schoolers will actually fill it out, but we'll try to receive feedback, so if there is positive feedback, we can potentially menu it again. Menu and daily offerings, so we've always had K-8 menu, which regulations are pretty similar, but this year, we kind of tailored it K-5, 6, 8, and 912. We've also posted on our webpage the daily offerings, so those are the items that are offered every day besides the hot entree. So that's like the salad and the yogurt lunch offerings. So catering, we're continuing to build this back up internally. We've updated our catering form and a supply form, and those are both available on the intranet. US Day Commodities, we're utilizing all our entitlement. We are going to be trying some new items this year, which is Cherry Blossom Chicken. We have some Orange Chicken Pulled Pork and Cavatapi Pasta, so hopefully the kids will enjoy some new stuff. UPK program is continuing. Rochester Christian School will be continuing. Professional Development Hours, those remain the same. Director needs 12 hours, cook managers need eight hours, and all other staff needs six hours. We did get some staff through Serve Safe this past year, and we'll continue to get more staff certified. This year, two staff attended the professional cooking training through State Ed, which is a free four-day training. And last school year, we sent two, so we've now gotten four staff through that training. They have found it to be very helpful. So we'll hope for more staff in the coming summer. We utilize Institute of Child Nutrition, the ICN trainings for more online opportunities. So when we can't get staff places, ICN is a great tool that has some online trainings. Mosaic Back of the House, so similar to our point-of-sale front of the house. The Back of the House is where we create our recipes and production records. We're working on consistency, so we'll have those that will also meet the nutrition standards, making sure that we're compliant with State Ed. So the nutrition standards, really the only major thing that is up kept right now is the sodium levels. So the target was in effect July 1 of this school year, or July 1, 2023. So I would say that we're in target. Again, we're working on that consistency to make sure that our products and what we're menuing is equaling out to meet those standards. Monroe County Meal Prices, this is a screenshot of what other Monroe County schools are doing for their meal prices. So Penfield is looking at $1.75 for breakfast. We're remaining the same at $3 for lunch. And we are doing 65 cents for milk, which is in line with the other county schools. This is a screenshot of reimbursement rates, so I don't have it year over year, but they are a little bit lower than last school year. And a wonderful picture of my entire team? Do you have any questions?
Board members, questions? Sure?
What's going to be done to try to recover that 30K? Or is it just a wash at the end of each year?
So we do still try to accommodate. So we send out letters, we encourage families to fill out the free, reduced forms if they feel they qualify. We continue to do the direct certification each year several times. Sometimes some of those kids, you know, things change in their households, and families get picked up in those SNAP Medicaid findings. Otherwise, it's just kind of hounding the parents. The negative balance does carry over, so we can see that those balances are still there.
So I, you know, I love the anti-shaming. I think that's really important, but I'm wondering how to meet both needs. Like, I'm wondering how to not shame kids, you know, in front of all their friends, you have no money left, but at the same time, to not let balances build up, because if any one family has a big balance, that's going to be even harder to pay. And if that child continues to get lunch...
I do know that some families that don't qualify for free, reduced this past year, that reached out when I'd sent out the letter, they didn't understand why they had a negative balance, we talked through it. So a lot of it is the student understanding as well, right? So parents are like, wow, my student eats breakfast before they come to school, they shouldn't be coming to breakfast. So with State Ed, you know, we let the parents know that reach us that if they would like a note on their account, we can do that to say, no breakfast allowed. I try to let the teachers know as well, especially at elementary level, to make sure that they're not sending the students down to the cafeteria. There really isn't a huge way around it, except education to families and students that, you know, that if there's not funds, they shouldn't be coming through the line.
Well, yeah, and I get that they would for a little while, but if now this year, they have a large balance, I deb it and then continue to get more lunches in the debit. I mean, that hurts, in the long run, that hurts the family.
Absolutely, yeah.
So that's what I'm wondering, if there's a, I mean, do you have any ideas, Dr. Driffl?
It's definitely a little bit of like a sticky wicket. So since this legislation went into effect, we do have limited recourse about what we can do, so we don't send letters home with kids, for instance. They're strictly email letters to the guardians. We're not allowed to send debt to collections. That's now explicitly outlawed. So like Ms. Dunson said, it's a lot of education, a lot of outreach to inform folks that, yes, the free waiver is gone. You may qualify for free and reduced, and in New York State, they make up the reduced. So if you're reduced, you're free. Like Angela said, we do the direct certification often, so if somebody moves on to Medicaid, we wipe a balance. If they qualify otherwise, if they move on to the free and reduced, we wipe a balance out so that it's not accruing over time. So we do everything we can within the current kind of parameters of what we can do. But at the same time, $30,000 was a big number. So it's like three times what our typical number was. And the rules are, the Food Service Fund, because it's a self-operating entity, it's a nonprofit, cannot eat that cost. The General Fund has to transfer that $30,000 over. So it's a taxpayer expense. But, you know, we do what we can.
What happens if a student graduates and they have, let's say, hundreds of dollars in a balance?
If a student graduates or moves away, the debt's absolved.
Piggyback on that, just real quick. So if a student does have like a balance, one way I found, because we've had a balance, and then my daughter wasn't able to get like an ice cream. Then she definitely brought that to my attention, and we corrected that immediately. But what about, do we know like where the balances are? Like, is it, like, what grade level?
So we can run reports to see by school, by grade. Yeah, we can definitely do that.
Maybe if it's like more kindergarten kids, you know, we could, you know, target those parents, like with education, as far as what to do. Any, I'm sorry, any other?
What I was going to comment on is perhaps because it was free the year before, that there was the assumption, and so maybe it's artificially high, you know, and more people will be aware of what's going on now. But maybe a little less reliance on emails, because it's a lot harder to ignore a letter that comes in the mail. So I'm pretty sure that Prestige covers this before the school year starts. And the application's written Prestige, so some are going to notice it there, and others will probably notice it more if they get an actual letter.
Yeah. So I will say that I want to say mid-year, I'd have to look back exactly, but around mid-year, I did do, anybody that was over $100, I did mail a letter, along with an application. Can't say that I received any, they might have paid their balance, but you know, I didn't recheck that. But nobody actually submitted an application from those letters.
Well, one more comment. Maybe $100 is too long to wait. Maybe we can reassess, like at $50 or something, I don't know. Maybe there is, I don't know if there's a better way, and I'm not saying there is. I'm just wondering if perhaps there is.
And I was just going to say, with emails, you know, there's always email fatigue from, think, everybody gets emails from everywhere. And I'm wondering if tools like Parent Square, we've been focusing on that, if there's a way, and I'm not, again, since we got that after my kids were out, you know, if they can be targeted instead of just to all class people, if you can do individual notices, and they're used to looking at that. So couldn't that be something, and again, maybe when it hits a certain point, make sure it gets to Parent Square or something like that.
And then to track it, to see, you know, I sent out 100 letters and 80 people paid after that, or only 10 people paid after that, or to see if it's being, if it's effective.
Yeah, and the difference that we did this year too is that graduating seniors, we sent out letters to let families know that they had remaining balances, but they would have also received notification if they had a negative balance. So I can tell you that we did, I don't know the exact number, but we did receive in negative balances on some of the graduating seniors. And several did ask for refunds or transferred it to other students, where I think years previous, that just kind of sat there until they told us what to do. We actually sent out letters to families to let them know they had a balance left or a negative balance.
Yeah, I had a balance left, and so I was able to decide where I wanted it to go.
Emily, Dr. Roberts, can I say something?
Yes, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead, Krista.
Thank you, Ms. Dunson. I am in awe of all the work that you do. Thank you so much. Also, how brilliant is it to meet with the incoming kindergarten families, to let them know like, hey, we're food service? I never had that with any of my kids, and I really, I think that's a great idea. Thank you. My concern is, if there's a student who's going having breakfast at home, whatever that may be, and coming to school and having breakfast again, they're hungry. So how can we, how can we do that? How can we help keep the balances low, all right, or nil preferably, and also feed our children? So is there a way for the teachers or maybe the nurses to have breakfast bars or snacks or something? Like, can we designate someone, somewhere, and have donations brought in? Or maybe our district can supply those so that we know the kiddos who are hungry. We also know the kiddos who just want to go for a walk, right? And say, direct them in the right direction, you know? And of course, this is all very sensitive information. Again, educating families and students, and just no shame at all, and making sure our children are fed and fed well so that they can continue to learn and thrive. So I know our teachers already have so much to do, but is there a way we can, you know, like, hey, I am 49 years old and I have two breakfasts. I do, right? I'm hungry, and if I don't, I can't function. So I can't imagine what a little one might be going through, you know? So that's just an idea.
Yeah. And I do think that the education around, especially to families, right? So what does a breakfast look like at home?
Right.
So is a breakfast, you know, a granola bar, one single granola bar, and it's not enough to keep them full? Whereas if they were able to get breakfast and lunch at school, or you know, even if they were a paid family, keeping that in mind, I mean, breakfast is $1.75, and they're able to get a full meal.
Yeah.
So it's just really educating, I think, families to say, hey, we're getting a good meal, that perception of what food service, school lunches look like or school breakfasts look like, because there's been a lot of, you know, negativity in the years past. And, you know, I think people do realize that they're not so bad once they get them, and we have a lot of different opportunities. I think the other challenge that we face is that with the State Ed regulations, especially like at lunchtime, we can't flavor food. It's not going to be the same as what they would get at home or what they're going to get at McDonald's. So a lot of kids, you know, they want to be picking and choosing what they get. So I would agree that some students probably are hungry. Also with State Ed, there are rules, at least around food service, offering things that are not, during certain timeframes, right? So we have the breakfast time, lunchtime, we're not supposed to provide anything in between, those types of rules and regulations.
Yeah, sure, that's why I was like, like, maybe the nurses or, you know, somebody can offer that, you know?
So we can definitely explore and see what we can come up with.
So what you were saying about, you know, kids being picky and choosy, listen, I saw something here about orange chicken and about a tater tot bowl?
Yes.
And about a muffin puff, like, is there any way that board members can come into food service?
Absolutely, absolutely. Feel free to stop in.
You know, so that, you know, I could tell my kids, like, what are you talking about?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Dunson, I appreciate you. Go ahead, Mark.
So I would just say, along those lines, if we talk about breakfast, it could very well be that the parents are not aware that the kids are eating breakfast. And it may not be hunger, it just may be kids eat, you know, they eat.
There's that hungry mark.
Hungry could also be a constant state, no matter how much you eat, right? So, but the point is, the point is, the parents may not be aware that their children are having breakfast, unless they're spending money at a higher rate than they're expecting to. So, you know, is there a way to make sure they understand what, you know, the rate at which kids are consuming?
Yeah.
I would just, I would add is that I think there's no simple solution. So we've been talking all year, like, the fact that there's a $30,000 debt that gets picked up by the general taxpayer from our general budget. And it's this fine line, because there are some kids who might be eating because they're hungry. There's other kids, they're eating because it's social. You get to go to breakfast, you get to hang out with friends. They're all getting lunch, you get lunch or breakfast. And some, like I've got, you know, we all have different kids. It's like, it's, I got a call once about, can you put more granola bars in the backpack? For us, no problem. For others, that might be an ask. And so trying to work through sort of making sure that students are fed, those that are hungry and not, and then the communication with parents. You know, everything we do in this district comes back to the partnership with home. And so the, I think this year, we all knew it was going to happen across the state, which was lunch was free for two years, and all of a sudden, it's not. And even, you know, living in the community, I was talking to people at the beginning of last school year, and they had no idea that lunch wasn't free anymore. We have done mailings and conversations and board presentations, but if you're not monitoring that, you're not in that world all the time, it's just, you forget. And then the lunch shaming laws that came down, that created policy, we talked about it, gosh, five, six years ago when that happened, which was, remember, Policy Committee had to talk through, I remember like, this is going to end up with a balance at some point, because it is good. We shouldn't be shaming kids. But the hard part is, we still have to provide the lunch. So as Emily mentioned, you can't go in with zero balance and get an ice cream cone, right? Or something from, something, one of those fancy smoothies, but you get the, you get the full lunch. But parents can, if they don't want their child to get lunch, because they're not putting money on the account, and they're not free and reduced, they can call and make sure there's a piece that says they don't get anything. They can't shame unless the parent says, you know, I don't want them getting lunch or breakfast at school. And we got to work through those. But at the end of the, at the end of the day, I think it's, you know, I'm glad I support the law that we're not shaming. I support the law that we're not sending these things to like debt collectors, like to go after families. This is, this is, it is what it is. We got to work on communicating, educating, trying to work within our schools to make sure hungry students, pre-K through graduate, have something to eat, if that's truly the need. And then again, that continued communication. And I'm hopeful that this year, another year where, you know, it's not free lunch, you know, that maybe that information continues to come. And then I do think, as a superintendent of the school board and with Angela, is this is, this is an advocacy piece that we worked on all last year. I think we continue to need to advocate, because to me, free lunches should just be a given. You're required to be in school, New York State says you've got to be here, but not the lunch. And I think that would solve many problems, being reversed by the state. We were able to do it. Some states continued this on past COVID. I think New York can do the same thing, but that's just that continued advocacy.
And I think along that lines, because some school districts in our county do qualify for free and reduced lunch?
For all.
For all. There is confusion, because I saw people communicating about it on a social media thing, and someone's like, no, Penfield doesn't meet blah, blah, blah. There was confusion, they're like, oh, but where I work, it's free. They didn't realize that it's not the same across the state. So there is confusion, because you have parents working in different districts.
So after this meeting, everybody has to tell 10 people lunches aren't free and tell them to tell 10 more people.
Got it. One more thing, Emily. You mentioned the nutrition standards about sodium, which is great. How come there's nothing about sugar and fat content also?
So I don't really have an answer to that. I'm just going by the regulations that they put out. So they do have calorie, you know, averages, right? They're all averages over a week's time. So we have to make sure that our menu meets, which includes our substitutions, that they all meet those averages between calories. They have calories, they do have fat and all of that, but the sodium was like, that was the big target this year, lowering that. Actually, it's been over the last couple of years, but that was that first target that we have to meet now. We'll be due for another audit, probably either next school year or the following school year. So we'll have to see where we're at then. And again, it's hard, right? My staff are all like, what do you mean, we can't add, so it has no flavor? No, nothing added. So kids are the same way.
I just appreciate so much Michelle Obama's advocacy about childhood obesity. And so I just hope that that doesn't get lost, although I realize that that's not under your purview.
Yeah, yeah. And we do have the smart snacks, right? So manufacturers are trying their best to tailor to these smart snack regulations so that it's appealing. When you think of breakfast and the reduced sugar of the common cereals like Cinnamon Toast Crunch and Cocoa Puffs and all of that, right? Those are all things that meet those standards, so we're able to serve them. It's not what families will see in the grocery store, right? So kids might go home and be like, well, we got Cocoa Puffs at school, the per se- the perception might be wrong, right? Same with Pop Tarts. You can't buy the reduced fat, low-sodium Pop Tarts in the retail, but that's what our Pop Tarts are if we serve them here at school. So there is a difference between retail and school K-12 manufacturers.
That's why you have kids going home saying, "Your Cocoa Puffs are so much better than the school's Cocoa Puffs."
Any more questions or comments? All right, well, thank you so much.
Angela, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Huge, a huge role you have, and I really appreciate it, and I know the board does in the district, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next August, make sure Angela brings brownies. So that's our first special report, and our second special report is Campus Construction for a Capitol Project update. Grab, if you're all coming up, grab another chair, perfect. Yep, you guys are all set with the.
Good evening, everybody. Gianna Gendo with Campus Construction.
Uh, thank you for having us. Jared Miller with Campus. I wish I'd brought a snack now. We won't make this too long because I'm sure everybody, if they haven't already, wants to go home and eat now. Yeah, just giving up an update on the current projects that we have in construction, where we are with planning, some other, some of the, some of the phases of the project, and just give you some photo updates on things you may not see in the field. So I'm gonna hand it off to Gianna. Gary, sorry, did you?
I'm all good.
Gary Huffman, also with.
He's observing.
Starting off, the project phases. Phase one is a transportation facility, that one is currently in construction right now. Phase two A is Scribner and Bay Trail roof improvements. That one went out to bid this past July twenty-fifth. Phase two A also consists of Harris Hill Secure Vestibule and the mechanical work in the gym. Phase two B is the high school, the commons, the library, and the multipurpose fields. And then phase three is the existing B and G transportation. The BCS items for the elementary schools, the kitchen serving lines, and some items at Bay Trail, including the loading dock. So the timeline, quickly going through, Indian Landing project is not part of the current Capitol project, but it's part of the Esser Funds project. That phase one is going on this summer. That includes also the Bay Trail AC improvements. Phase two is next summer. The reason why these are broken up is because there are nineteen classrooms total, tight timeline for one summer, so we split it up, ten classrooms this summer, nine classrooms next summer because there's nineteen total.
Yeah, so that project was actually bid last fall. So we were at the advantage, we'll call it an advantage now, but it was delayed in getting it out of SED as, as we discussed prior, previously. But we had enough time to get a lot of materials ahead of time. So we were finding our way with the first bid of the project and, and trying to really understand some of the unforeseen in some of the classrooms. It's nice to have a project that's broken up in, in two years because your first year, you do all the learning. In the second year, there's not much more to explore. So it really kind of tells you the direction you have to go in the, in the following season. So you'll see in some of the photos, and hopefully, hopefully I'm not jumping too far ahead, but we've, we've gone through all the difficult components, we know what we have for next year, and we will wrap the project up for this, this year's worth of work, getting over those milestones and, and getting over those hurdles. So all positive with that project.
Phase one transportation facility, that started June of this year and wraps up at the end of 2024. Phase two A Scribner and Bay Trail roof work, we're hoping to start at the end of the summer, and that project will end the end of next summer. There's summer work that can be done, but there's also some work that needs to be done in the classroom so that'll just have to be done over the breaks. And then the Harris Hill Vestibule HVAC portion, that one will be bidding this fall, in October. And then as far as phase two B, which is the commons, the library, the multipurpose fields, those documents were sent to the State Education Department on August fourth. We expect to turn around an approval around February of twenty-four to bid at the end of March for hopefully starting the work in April of 2024. And all that work is slated to the finish, or complete, sorry, at the end of 2025. So getting into phase one transportation facility, the work going on right now, obviously the bulk of it is site work, DDS is our site contractor. We had cut and fill activities to bring the great, the site up to grade, the infill of crushed stone for the roadways and the parking areas. As you can see in some of the photos, there's the main roadway where they have the fabric under the stone. And then, of course, all of the utilities for the site, sanitary, the storm, the water main, all the utilities necessary for the building have been going on. And the site contractor also dug for the electric contractor, which is Bellator Electric, for the underground conduit for their work, and the buildup of the foundation pad.
Yeah, just to kind of highlight one of these items, the fill for this site was pretty monumental. There's over thirty thousand cubic yards of fill to bring that site up. That work is completed. The building pad is ready for foundations. We had that slated for end of September, I believe.
Mid-September.
So we're roughly a month, month and a half ahead of that. So things are moving along at a, at a good clip. So we're hoping we continue in that, that same path with everything we have moving forward.
And just here are some more photos of daily operations on the job site. We have a septic tank being installed underground. That top right is the corner of the building pad, and then the berm next to it with hydro seed sprayed on it. And then the one, the bottom right is the view on Jackson Road where the bio retention pond is.
Yeah, she mentioned the, the septic tank. We did go through many iterations of the design, and one of them did include a full septic system. We do know, obviously, that we, through other building projects, we were able to tie into the sewer. This, this tank is to hold the material leaving the building, and that material is then pumped from there to that sewer. So it's not a septic system, it's just a, a tank where it goes and then it gets pumped to the rest of the sewer system. So I just didn't want the, the septic tank piece to be confused with the previous design where we actually had that full septic field.
Because the grade is so flat, it has to be pumped. It's not like the main is lower than the building, just how the topography is and how the line was set at the road. So it has to be forced, they call it a forced main.
Um, the Esser project in the landing Bay Trail. So the Bay Trail improvements that are going on in the summer of 2023, the rooftop unit condenser was sat last week. That is obviously powering all the AC units on the second floor of the new addition at Bay Trail. The AC heads are mounted in the hallways, and the destratification fans, as you can see from the photo, are hung from the ceiling and working.
Yeah, and if you know Bay Trail, you know that those high ceilings, it's just a lot of air volume. So those destratification fans keep that air moving, keep it from getting stagnant.
As far as Indian Landing, the summer 2023 work, right now going on, on the job site are finishes. So drywall finishing, painting started today, ceiling grid and tile is going up currently. The UV units that are gonna be supplying the, the chilled air and then the, obviously the heating system. Just so everybody knows that the heating system will be active this coming school year, but the chilled portion, the air, air conditioning is part of the phase three project, so this is just in preparation for that. And then as far as like MEP finishes, there's gonna be new counters and sinks going in all the classrooms, so new fixtures, new flooring, painting, new millwork, everything. So it's coming together nicely.
Yeah, and some of the hurdles that I stumbled on and previously discussed. We did see an increase in what we anticipated for abatement in these spaces. We had some initial tests on the floors where the material tested as negative for asbestos, but as we dug down a little bit deeper into the bedding and some of the adhesive, we did find that some of, a lot of it was hot. So we did have to go through and abate many of those floors, which you'll see a change order for that. It was a significant change order, but it's, it's all work that's necessary. We either do it now or we do it down the road, and obviously, we don't want to tear apart, tear apart these classrooms again to do it later. So the funds are obviously there. And, and we've overcome that hurdle and, and we're moving along. Anytime we, we hit this many classrooms for restoration work or remodel work, it's always, it's always a sprint to the finish, but we're in a good spot. So a lot of confidence coming to the end of the summer.
I just want to touch upon and have the board remember that because this year, we're doing board tours before the school year starts in most of the buildings. So you're gonna see buildings not quite ready for students yet, which just, you know, be different if you're a board member who've been on tours and there's kids there and everything's great. I think Indian Landing, you, we're gonna be going to the, going to the wire here with teachers coming back. But there's cold air at the end of that wire, so we'll get through. If you remember doing, you know, the biggest one we dealt with was at the high school with the math classrooms and auditorium. And if you remember, we didn't have ceilings, we had, you know, all these things that we thought the students would mess around with wires and stuff in the ceiling, and, and we didn't have a single issue with kids. It's, you know, it's adults, it's, it is, they're coming into the classrooms, it's gonna be a little bit tricky those first few days. But we're doing everything we can to make sure they're ready. But I'm actually glad the board's gonna do tours in the summer to see that too because ideally, that's what the purpose of board tours is, is to give the thumbs up before the school year. But most districts don't do it in the summer.
The school will open.
Yes, hundred percent.
It will be safe and secure. So there's emphasis made on those three points.
My line typically always is, whether you like it or not, they're showing up. So, and they won't know, the kids don't know, they're just there to learn, they're excited, they're not gonna worry about whether their poster's hanging up, so.
And, and what Gianna mentioned is, ceilings are going up now.
Great.
Paint is going on the walls, we're ready for floors, our casework is, is ready to go in.
It's gonna come together really quickly.
So, yeah, if you, Gary was there on Friday, I believe, and the work, the work that happened on Saturday and Sunday.
It was night and day.
It was, yeah, absolutely night and day. And the contractors are, are really putting in a lot of effort to, to get it wrapped up. And in enough time to turn it over to Georgia's folks to, to get the rooms cleaned and prepped for the teachers to come in, just like they would any other year. So that's our goal.
And Jared touched on the change orders you're approving tonight. That's why we built construction contingencies into the budget is for these unanticipated surprises, you know, like this abatement. So there's, that's why Jared said, there's funds available because we have that contingency there. It's never our goal to spend it all, but it's there for these reasons to fight, to pay for those found events, like asbestos. So rest assured.
Learned that my first year with vermiculite at Bay Trail.
That, that one was probably one of the worst ones I've ever run into.
Look it, now it's beautiful, all worked out.
It is, it is. Sorry.
No, I took that off task, sorry. Sorry.
I'm sorry about, sorry about that, Jim.
I don't think you put the vermiculite in.
No, I didn't, but.
That was shocking, though.
Yeah.
That was a big deal.
Oh, yeah, a hundred percent.
Very unexpected, very expensive.
Yep.
Yeah, and it just had to be done, yeah.
It's just amazing what, I think that's sort of like, I speak to people watching and their community is, is, you know, these are pieces where asbestos was used because it was deemed safe and affordable and, and good at what it did. And then, you know, X years later, you realize this is not. You know, I mean, asbestos was used as the, as the snow in the Wizard of Oz scenes, you know? So like, it was, it was used quite a lot, and we don't have, you know, our blueprints don't point out where, where vermiculite was put into the walls or anything like that from, from way back. So it just, it's every project, you're gonna find something.
Okay, moving on, phase two A, the Scribner and Bay Trail roof improvements. That was recently bid, that project recently bid on July twenty-fifth. We did it through cooperative purchase, so we chose two roofing contractors to bid against each other and give us a competitive bid for this work. So the low bid was Elmer W., Elmer W. Davis. So I believe that's on the agenda tonight for approval so we can award that contract.
Yeah, the, the bidding law for cooperative purchases does not require us to kind of get that competitive nature because it's already been bid in such a way. But we've found that to keep it as competitive as possible, it, it's best to put two of those co-ops against each other. They don't love it, obviously. But the goal is obviously best value for the district. So we, we, we've got great numbers based on how we budgeted, so it was under budget. And it's a, both were reliable contractors, that's why we asked them for numbers. So I think we'll be in really, really good shape for the project.
Board members, questions or comments?
I have a question, just for clarification for the community members, especially at Harris Hill. If I'm remembering correctly, the secure vestibule was supposed to be done this summer, but we couldn't bid out soon enough for it because of state ed, right? Wasn't approved by state ed, so we decided, am I missing that, mixing that up?
No, we actually, we actually moved, we moved it from phase three to phase two.
We moved it from three to two, okay.
Yeah, so we moved it up one or even two summers, two summers.
Yeah, it was, this goes back a little bit, but it was, we all, sorry, we all decided to collectively to do it next. Right, which moved it up a summer, actually.
Okay.
So that'll bid in October.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
There was, I think, I don't think you're incorrect, Kristin. There was a conversation around, could we do it this summer that's almost over? And the, and the answer then was, it's too late to add it in and change it, but we did move it from the phase three up to phase two.
Because we would have been doing it while kids were in school, right?
Yes, yep.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, so bidding, as you see in October for that project, is our hope, and then, and then be able to have that finished by the end of next summer.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're at the mercy of submitting it to SED for approval. And that, that period of time, it's just, it wouldn't have allowed for us to, to bid it and get the work done in the summer. It would have put us too, too far into this late spring when we were able to maybe even get it approved, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
You know, we had, during the design phase of the transportation facility, we had a lot of community input from the neighbors, just mainly, you know, who were living there. And now that we're under construction, are we, have we heard any comments from the neighbors in that area about what's going on with the construction or impact or any of those kinds of things?
I could speak that I haven't, we haven't heard anything that I know of, like, formal. I be fair and honest and transparent, I think there are still folks who don't want to have a transportation facility there. I understand that. But, you know, we've worked with the information we had when we did the design phase, trying everything we can to make sure that it's not an eyesore, it's not right on the road, trying to make sure that we can be good neighbors in that situation. So ultimately, what I have heard is the, the other side, which is people who currently live around the very congested current bus garage wanting to know when our buses are moving. So I hear from them more often than I hear, you know, but again, I, I, I would, you know, acknowledge that I understand, you know, the bus garage isn't what folks were hoping, but if you live right there, but we're doing everything we can to be good neighbors and have that sort of, I think once we're up and, up in there, again, it's not a very busy location in the sense that the buses run in the morning, they run in the afternoon, weekends is quiet, you know, that's evenings, you know, overnights is quiet, so I think once we're up and running, it will be good neighbors.
As far as the campus team goes, we have not seen anything on the job site either. We've given our cards out to the neighbors around us as well, so if they need anything, they know how to contact us.
Oh, good. Yeah, one of the, one of the very first days, we were onsite doing some, some field investigation after we bid the project. The neighbor across the street did come over. I think she was, yeah, I think she was one of the ones that was concerned at a community meeting.
Yes.
And we showed her the plans of what we plan to do to screen that property from the bus garage. And I imagine she's seen the, the berm go in, you know, right up against that, that right of way. So I, I think she's seeing what was promised come to fruition, and I think, you know, because of that, there's not a lot of questions there. It's, you know, it's only gonna get better from where we are right now, a bare, you know, site that's almost all dirt and stone and construction vehicles is probably gonna be more of a nuisance than it's ever going to be when it's a bus garage. So we're just hopeful that it continues that way, and as the questions come in, obviously, we'll field them. And as the questions come in, obviously we'll field them.
Right, thank you.
So will construction go on during the winter?
Yes.
Okay, so it's going to be a year round, or year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the goal is to get the foundations in as soon as possible.
Yeah.
We're working to get to that point. And then, you know, once the foundation is in, the, the building will arrive in short time. And then the steel will start going up. So you'll see a lot happen very quickly once those foundations are in, just like building a house. The outside goes up very quickly and then all the efforts will move inside and people will ask us every week when it's going to open. So, but yeah, it, work will definitely continue throughout the winter.
Okay, and I have another question about that septic tank. Just so I can understand it, is that when the material comes from the building and it goes into the septic tank, then it goes into the sewer? Is it like one continuous process or is it a holding tank and then it go? I mean, how does that work? I, I didn't even know that was a thing.
So it collects in the tank and then there's what's called a grinder pump?
Yeah.
That will put it into the force main and send it directly into the sewer system.
Okay, so does it run continuously or?
No, no, it'll, it.
Yeah, there'll be a float in it.
Yep.
Oh, okay, okay.
Similar to your sump pump.
All right.
Grind and pump.
So it's like an ejector pump kind of thing?
Yep, exactly.
Pretty much.
All right.
It's like a large smelly sump pump.
Yeah.
Very technical, very technical.
Yeah, you know, it's like.
If you have a crock in your basement, like a pump in your basement for water, groundwater, it's kind of the same concept.
Yeah, we, we have that because our ba, I don't know, it just, it, it wouldn't flow right. We had to push it out, the water. So I'm, I was assuming that, but I, I'd never heard of that before with a sewer, you know, a sump pump situation.
It's actually not uncommon just because of how houses and businesses are built in the world. And you get changes in elevation.
Yeah.
You can't always make everything flow downhill. The septic plant can't always be at the bottom of everything. So some things are higher than the septic, so you have to move things and they have grinder pumps. You don't even know, they're, they're right by the side of the road and may not even know what you're seeing, but they're there.
Yeah.
And it's, it's very common.
Yeah, you may hear, hear the term lift station or pump station.
Yeah.
Gravity sewers feed into those and then they get pumped elsewhere. So it's, it's very common. It's a very reliable way to do things, actually because there is a pump and there's alarms built into the pumps. Because it is being pumped, you're not ever at the risk of a pipe settling and having a blockage. It's not to say that they never do get blocked for any reason, but it's less likely, so.
Yeah, thanks, I appreciate it. Now I can, now I understand it because I, if I didn't ask that question, I would be like, does it go like this? Does it go like that? And I wanted to get it, so thank you.
Any other questions? Look forward to seeing the work and the progress when we go on the board tours. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. What are your board tours, just curiously?
Next, no, yes, next week.
Kathleen tells me where I'm supposed to be.
Yeah, Friday we have one and then the week after, right?
Do you want to, I can send you the dates if you're interested.
We'd, we'd be happy to walk through with you.
Okay, yeah.
And then are you intending to go to the transportation facility?
No, for, for a tour? Not this year, I don't know.
Yes, 11:30.
Because we were just up there, but.
Perfect.
I'll verify and I can, we'll send you those dates. Dan's writing them down right now, I think, so we'll get them to you. But I think that'd be great if you guys are available for special Indian Landing, I think.
Yeah, it'd be great. Absolutely. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That concludes special reports.
Thank you. Okay, student and staff honors.
Oh, that's me. Okay, so student and staff honors. We just have a few at summertime, but we're still finding great things to celebrate. I have one very quick update and then I'll turn it to Dr. Driffl for some business updates. So just a congratulations to all Greater Rochester teams and congratulations to our PHS athletes who were named all Greater Rochester teams for the spring. Peyton Roffus for girls lacrosse and Peter Northrup for boys track. In our agenda, there is also 18 other Penfield athletes that were honorable mentions for their sports. So again, just kudos to our, our student athletes, our coaches and all the work that gets done here. Bus safety program, so this was our annual bus safety program, the Penfield strives for school bus safety, hosted by the Penfield Transportation Department. And this is an opportunity in August where kindergarten students and their parents and guardians during the first week of August, they come out, they get to learn about bus safety, they get a bus ride. And we get ready for the beginning of the school year. So I can tell you as a superintendent, it's a great event. I can tell you as a dad of an incoming kindergartner, it's a really fun event. And you can tell which kindergartners have older siblings and which don't simply be how they act on the bus. Because we were with some kiddos who had older siblings and they were all like, let's go, come on everybody, hop on the bus. Let's do this, all right, get your seatbelt on. And then the little guys who maybe it's their first kiddo going to kindergarten, they're a little bit more shy sometimes, so. But it really was a great event. The kids loved the bus ride and they love the, they give a little goody bag afterwards. And the one thing you can see is our bus drivers care deeply about kids and, and interacting. So it was, it was a nice event and kudos to Mike Gala as well as Angela Dunson, who was there the second night, provided more information for families with food service. So I did hear from a number of parents I've talked to who have, in my situation, have older kids and then all of a sudden a younger kid and they really enjoyed it. It was, it was more, in the past it was, we started at Cobble's and we took a bus ride to Harris Hill and then back to Cobble's. And this was all at Scribner and the bus ride went around and came back to Scribner. So it, it shortened it greatly, but also had good information, so it was nice. And I think all the Penfield ice cream establishments enjoy this because when we went to get ice cream, it was very crowded with other kindergartners who were getting ice cream after their bus ride. And I would just point out too, because it comes up, is we do have families who move in. We do have families who couldn't make it to this event. We do have families who maybe have a student in a private school but live in Penfield. And I know the bus garage is always helpful if a student or family missed this event and they're nervous about the bus ride, that if they reach out to the Director of Transportation, Mike Gala, he'll find a way to just have you come over to bus garage and show you the bus and, and kind of walk through the bus safety rules. They've been really good with that. That's it for my updates. I have one little update, which is, which is as an educator and a parent, these are really, these are things we don't talk about, but the first day of school is right around the corner. So our first day for our 10-month faculty is August 30th, it's Wednesday. And then the first day for all students is September 6th, that Wednesday after Labor Day. So as a reminder, teachers will be with us for three days. Well, teachers are off Friday before Labor Day and then Labor Day, they have one more day Tuesday with no students to prepare their classrooms and then our students return to September 6th. So I can't believe it, but it's, it's coming. And is there any questions? Go ahead.
Just a quick comment about the, the bus thing that you were just talking about. I attended that, which to me seems like maybe yesterday. And I, and I saw one of my little family members going into kindergarten that, that year. And I, I was with a group of family members over the weekend and one of them got COVID, which is always the downer. But the one that I, I saw on that little escapade there is going into Bay Trail. And his grandma, my cousin, mentioned that to me, that Thomas was going into Bay Trail. And I just couldn't believe it, you know, because you just said, I can't believe we're going to start another school year.
Yeah. And I think it's, isn't that sort of the piece of all parents, like I, you know, but like I look at this kindergartner I got and it's amazing to me because I'm like, he was just like two years old.
Right.
So, but he's, he's ready, he's gonna, there's no holding him back. He's ready to go, so.
That's wonderful, but I mean the time.
It goes fast.
It really, really does. I can't believe it because when you were saying that about the, the bus rides and everything and I, I'm like, it's been that long since I saw him there, but it doesn't seem that long at all, so there you go.
And I'll just note is that, you know, that we do have a, a large number of staff that work all summer long, you know? Their administrators and, and then, and teachers are working too in terms of curriculum work, not all, but many people doing work. But like, so I think, you know, I'm ready, let's get people back, you know? You know, the buildings are empty and so we've got to fill them with kids. As I always say, no one goes into public education to hang out with adults. So by the end of the summer, I'm like, all right, let's fill these buildings with students again, so.
There we go.
And actually Tom, along those lines, and it was, we were invited, as we always are, to the Breakfast for Leadership Retreat, which was just a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, again, it's, it just shows how much work is done to make sure everything is in alignment, academically, culturally, there's a lot of enthusiasm and, and I think it's a, you know, it just shows how coherent the, the leadership, the folks here and then the folks who aren't here are preparing for the, the school and preparing for the staff for the upcoming year.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, this team here, as you know, the Assistant Superintendent as well as people within professional development and, and the work we do, there, there's a lot of work that goes in to trying to, you know, we're, we're a small city. You know, we're, we're, you know, a thousand staff members and 5,000 students around and so we've, we've got a, a lot. But I can tell you, I think from the leadership retreat, we'll talk a bit at, at an upcoming workshop, but, but there's a lot of excitement to get back. We're doing great things for kids. We're, we're seeing, so you've seen that work really sort of shift things. And I just, I know there's an excitement from the leadership, all the administrators, to get their teachers back, to get, to get their staff back and to get our students back. So we're excited for a great year.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll turn it over to Dr. Driffl.
Great. All right, so we have quite a few action items for your consideration this evening here. So as we heard earlier from our construction managers at campus construction, we do have two change orders on the agenda for tonight. One, they mentioned was that abatement in Indian Landing, that's that stimulus funded project. The second one is a modification to the design at the new bus garage that the Monroe County Water Authority wanted us to change something relative to connecting to the sewer. So obviously we, we have to play ball there. They also mentioned the roofing award for that Phase 2A work. So we had two bidders, the results of which are fully in your packet, under budget, good contractor. Hoping to have a lot of that done this fall. They can really get going pretty soon. They've ensured us they can mobilize pretty quickly. We've been having good luck with weather in the fall, so we think we, you know, have a good stretch here of time to get a lot of that done. As Mrs. Dunsen mentioned, we have our food service budget for your review and consideration tonight. So it's a $2.3 million budget, so way smaller than our general fund budget of $116 million. Last year, we did have a small operational surplus, so we took in about $2.2 million and we spent just under $2.2 million. So I think it was like a $40,000 or $50,000 surplus. If you don't know, the food service fund is not meant to be profitable. You're really supposed to break even or as close to as possible. So it was a great year last year in terms of the results from Angela's team. Angela also mentioned the meal prices for next year. So we're really excited that we're able to keep the lunch prices the same for next year. So those will continue at $3. The proposals increased breakfast and the extra milk by a nickel each. So the breakfast price goes from $1.70 to $1.75 and the extra milk goes from $0.60 to $0.65. And if you reference back to that screenshot that Angela shared, it showed all the prices in the county. We're really kind of right in the middle of where all those folks are. I'll talk a little bit more about the tax warrant and our tax rates in a second. We also have a, we have four private duty nursing contracts for consideration tonight. I think all four of them are returning to us. So these are our nurses that work with medically fragile children that are often in a private educational setting. They require that kind of one-to-one support. The rate is dictate, dictated by the state of New York based on upstate versus the downstate, whether or not they're listed on the public directory and whether or not they have that medically fragile certifications. And then we also have a service agreement renewal with the Center for Youth. So if you're not aware, Center for Youth provides a participant in all six of our buildings. It's funded through the IDA grant, federal grant. So I think we're, we can answer any questions related to that partnership when we get to that later in the evening. So tax rate setting and levy collection, so every August, the board has to officially adopt the warrant. So what we have here is what last year's tax rates were for each town. So for instance, Penfield last year was at $20.94 tax rate per $1,000 of assessed value on your home. The actual rate for next year will be $20.14, so that's an actual decrease of 80 cents or 3.84%. Those two columns to the right are what we were projecting back in April. So we were projecting Penfield's rate to decrease 3.48%, so it actually decreased 3.84%. The difference there is that nearly 4 tenths of a percent. We were close on our projections for all of them except for Pittsburgh. Pittsburgh, it's a little bit of like the law of small numbers that we really only have a couple dozen properties in the town of Pittsburgh. So any kind of swing in their exemptions or their assessments kind of throws that out of whack. So we were forecasting Pittsburgh's rate to increase 10%. It's only increasing 2.95%. Brighton's, if you recall back to all our budget development conversations in the spring, their equalization rate had dropped really far last year. So they went from 89% equalization down to 70% and that's what caused the rate to go up so much. So we were projecting for them to be at a 15% increase and end up being just under 15, 14.93. I'll draw your attention to that very bottom row, that's that true value tax rate. So that's the true value if all six of our towns were assessed at 100% relative to the market. So 100% equalization rates for all of those. The true value tax rate for this year is $18.94. That's a $2 decrease or almost nine and a half percent year over year. So relatively close to what we were projecting back to the community in, in the spring. We did not have Brighton's numbers at the time, so I think that's part of the reason why it was off a little bit. But none of the equalization rates changed, all the ones that we were projecting were the final. So as a reminder, the tax levy collection process starts September 1st. The period of no fees is through the entire month of September. If you pay from October to the end of October, it's a 2% fee that is charged. If you live in Monroe County, they also offer an installment plan. So it's three payments, September 15th, October 15th and November 15th. Wayne County does not offer that. So yeah, we're looking forward to another tax collection process come fall. If anybody in the community has any questions regarding their bill, those will be getting sent out in, you know, the next couple of weeks here. You're always welcome to reach out to my office. Can I answer any questions that come up? Any questions from the board on tax rates before I open it up to any other discussion? Or we could just jump right into any other discussion?
Well, thank you.
I got one.
Oh, go ahead.
Try not to jump too early. Dan, can you explain, I'm kind of looking at the numbers here back to the levy you have? You know, I'm trying to say, okay, it's an average or a weighted average with Penfield being more. But you know, I look at the true value rate and you may have said it, I may not have caught it. You know, why is the true value rate so much lower than the, any of the towns? You know, we have the 18.94.
Yep.
And then all the rest are, you know, and, and broken down individually, they're in the twenties.
Yeah, I think the easiest way to think about it is that none of the six towns are at 100% equalization rate.
Okay.
So if you say, so Penfield this year is at 94%. So we're 6% under. So I don't know the math off the top of my head, but if you took 6% off of the $20.14 coupled with all the other equalization rates, particularly Brighton because they're our second biggest town, that's probably why it landed at 18.9%. So if you took the weighted average of what the equalization rates are, I guess is it's 12% lower or something like that, which is probably going to bring you close to that $19 true value rate. I could check the, the math again, but that's the reason why, is that all those equalization rates are lower.
Okay, good, thanks.
Anyone else?
That concludes superintendent reports.
You sound so sad or something.
Sorry. That concludes superintendent reports.
Much better. All right, we are on 5A. So can I have a motion in a second that the board approves the revised curriculum writing projects for the 2023, 2024 school year? So moved. Second. Questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor and none opposed? Can I please have a motion in a second that the board authorizes Katherine Dean to designate and approve impartial hearings? to designate and approve impartial hearing officers during the 2023-2024 school year? Such hearing officers shall be presented for approval at the next regular meeting of the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I just want to say it kept me really busy last year.
All those in favor? All in favor and none opposed? All right. Can I please have a motion in a second that the Board of Education appoints Daniel Baker as Chemical Hygiene Officer for the 2023-2024 school year?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor and none opposed? We are on to Public Comments, 6A. We, as a board, appreciate the comments of the community during the public session of the board meeting. Every individual that speaks has a vested interest in the education of our students. Your comments are important to us. Concerns raised will be referred to the district administration for follow-up or Action 1 appropriate. Community members may sign up to speak at a meeting by emailing District Clerk Kathleen Zastro with their name, address, phone number, and topic they wish to address. Registration will open at 8:00 AM on the Friday before the meeting and remain open until 1:00 PM on the Tuesday of the board meeting. Speakers are requested to identify themselves with their name, name of organization represented, and a brief description of the topic to be addressed before presenting and limit their comments to three minutes or less. Okay? All right, we are on 7A, change orders. Maybe my computer. Okay, can I please have a motion in a second that the change orders as described above be approved?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor and none opposed? It's quick thinking on my toes. All right, Capitol Project Resolution. Can I please have a motion? And a second that the contract for Capitol Construction Roofing Project be awarded and approved as we heard and described below?
So moved.
Second.
Catherine, second. All right, any questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor and none opposed? The recommended food service C-Fund budget is $2,315,000 for the 2023-2024 school year. Can I please have a motion in a second that the board approves the lunch fund budget for the 2023-2024 school year as recommended?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Aaliyah, second by Catherine. School lunch prices. Can I please have a motion in a second that the board approves the prices of school meals as recommended for the 2023-2024 school year?
So moved.
Second.
Did we vote on the prior one?
On the lunch fund budget? I believe we did, right?
We did not.
Kathleen, we did the, we just got to vote on the.
Oh, thank you.
On the lunch fund budget. Correct. Yep.
All right, all those in favor? Thank you for catching that. All in favor and none opposed? Okay, lunch prices? Did we have a motion in a second?
I motioned, Mark, second.
Okay.
Now we need to vote.
All right, questions or comments? All in favor? All in favor and none opposed? Can I please have a motion in a second that described transfers and adjusted, and adjustments, excuse me, be approved and that the school tax rates for the 2023-2024 school year be set based upon a real property tax levy of $68,293,385?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor and none opposed? Can I please have a motion in a second to approve, to approve independent contractor agreements with Tyra Conley, Fonche Green, Susan Robbins, and Avery Stanton for the performance of private duty nursing services for medically fragile students effective July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor? All in favor and none opposed? Can I please have a motion in a second that the board authorizes the superintendent of schools to enter into a contract with Center for Youth Services for the 2023-2024 school year? The contract is not to exceed $300,000 and will be paid through IDA grant.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor and none opposed? Can I please have a motion in a second that the board approves the Professional Learning Plan as presented on July 11th, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor and none opposed? We have a policy for second read and approval?
Yeah, so this is our code of conduct, which is a policy. Also, we had a public hearing that just recently closed, at the last meeting where the, was presented from a member of the Children's Institute. There have been some edits based on feedback, primarily from our incredible school board and also internally. And so we've gone through that. This version that's on Board Docs is up for approval this evening. There'll be a couple more minor edits before it gets published, but really more just one more clean read through to make sure that everything reads how it's supposed to and be ready to go and ready to, our goal is to have it printed very soon after approval. So we can also make sure that we distribute it and get it out there.
Awesome, thank you. Can I have a motion in a second that the board approves the following policy or the code of conduct policy as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? All in favor and none opposed?
And I'll just mention, thank you, that it's approved because this is more than a year. This is a year of work that we've gone through this process. But it has been a point of conversation and work from previous policy committees for many years, even before COVID, which slowed things down. So a lot of work has gone into this. And the code of conduct is a policy that per New York State, we should be approving every year. And so as we go through this year, we're going to be taking feedback, monitoring, making sure, you know, we need to make some tweaks and changes along the way. The best time to do that would be over the summer, based on feedback we receive. So I think that's really important for any policy that is around code of conduct and behaviors. And we should be monitoring that and making sure that it follows our practice in school. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The NISBA Annual Convention and Education Expo is again in October, the 26th through the 28th in Buffalo. And if you plan on attending, if you could just let Kathleen know, the early bird registration has begun, August 8th, and it runs through September 18th. And Nicole, I know you had, you wanted us to kind of, you had a question about what it is about?
I did.
Does anyone, I thought that the convention that I went to, it was amazing. There were a lot of different speakers and, you know, each person was able to pick their topic, you know, or their topic of interest and just learn more about what other districts are doing. Does anyone else have?
Yeah, I went last year and I think one of the benefits was there was a handful of us there. So we were kind of able to divide and conquer and learn a lot and then, you know, kind of convene back. The guest speaker was probably, or keynote speaker was probably the highlight of it, in my opinion. But no, it was really good networking, really good to talk to a lot of different people, very informative.
And then we usually have like time to kind of talk about what everyone, what topics they went to and all of that kind of stuff. So it's really nice. And then committee assignments. Those will be completed by the end of the week. I got, we got everyone's feedback and then we'll put them into, put everyone into the assignments and then let you guys know. Okay? Any new business? Go ahead.
I would just like to share with you my experience. A couple of weeks ago, I had the pleasure and the privilege of going to the Rochester Teen Film Festival at the Little Theater. And we actually had a past student, he's a recent graduate, Eli Jeffrey, who participated. If anybody knows, anybody out in the community knows Eli. He is a very, very talented, kind, well-spoken young man. And he, I would love to live in his brain a little bit. He's so creative. And he made a short film called, I have my notes here, Trumpet Practice. And he created the whole set out of cardboard. And his main reason was that he was trying to, he's one who loves perfection. So he thought he'll use a material that you cannot get perfection from. And I just want to let Eli know, if he's listening, that it was perfect. You know, it was just amazing. He made these little houses and people, curtains, you name it. So if you, I'm sure it's on YouTube, Trumpet Practice by Eli Jeffrey. It was great. And Eli, when he received his award, just to let you know, he won Best of the Best Award. So the highest one. And he won the Philip Seymour Hoffman Award. And Philip Seymour Hoffman's mom was there, his mother was there, and she was able to present it. And we got to watch the film as well. And Eli was extremely kind in receiving his award. And he said the whole idea behind Trumpet Practice was, it was about community and that there are all these different perspectives in a community. And that he was highlighting that when we listen to each other, we can make beautiful music together. So it was this one guy who was playing a trumpet and he was not doing a very good job. And he was really bothering the neighbors until one day somebody listened and they played their instrument along with him. And then everybody in the neighborhood played the music together and it was just wonderful. He had his family there and they were extremely proud. And I hooted and hollered and I was very proud. So I just wanted to share that, let's look out for Eli and what he's, he's going to RIT for animation. And he's really excited. So.
I bless you.
Go Penfield. Yeah.
Thank you for that. That was amazing.
You're welcome.
It's awesome to hear. All right, any other new business? I'm smiling. Can I please have a motion in a second that the meeting be adjourned at 7:56 PM?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor and none opposed?